You are. You're one over.
One over? I got you.
Try your one over.
Ready or not, okay. Does this mean I have to be on camera?
That's the reasoning.
Right. Ready guys? Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this morning's meeting. And I'd like to dive straight in to the roll call, please.
Mrs. Power.
Present.
Mr. Camfield.
Yes.
Chairman Murphy.
Yes.
Let it be noted also in attendance Town Manager Dunham, Assistant Town Attorney Nizaro, and myself.
Thank you. We've had a chance to read the minutes from the meeting of July 27. Are there any changes?
No change.
No.
In that case, can I have a motion to approve them, please?
Second.
Mrs. Power.
Yes.
Mr. Camfield.
Yes.
Chairman Murphy.
Yes. Renee, any additions, withdrawals, deferrals?
Not today.
Okay. As we can see, the future meetings, October 26, November 16, December 28. If anyone is not available, please can we let Renee know as soon as possible?
And please be reminded that November 16 is the week before it normally is.
Excellent. Has there been any expertise communication regarding the applications in front of us this morning?
No.
No.
Thanks. Renee, can you administer the oaths to anybody who wishes to speak this morning? Please, can you take the oath?
It's in my right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you back. If I don't know you, please make sure I know your name before you leave.
Thanks, Renee. And so we move to the first application of this morning. It's for the Little Club. And if you'd like to make your presentation.
Yes, good morning. I'm Carol Perez with AGT Land Landscape Architecture. And this is a landscape beautification project. The... Is there a clicker?
Just let me know.
I think... Are there two slides above this, maybe?
No, this is the first one.
Yep.
Oh, okay. So we'll go back to the... Oh, there. All right. So we're all familiar with the Little Club. This is a beautification project for the parking lot, which is shown in the dot in red. We are removing sixteen sable palms and ten trees that are in poor condition. And then, next slide. So these are the trees that we're removing. There's some miscellaneous sable palms, and there's a few trees that are leaning and not in good shape. There's also landscape islands where there's no trees at all. Next slide. So what we're proposing on the west side is to replace the trees with pitch apples, and that is on the left-hand side of the page. And in the center islands, put in Sylvester date palms. And there's, we have eleven of those going in. And then we would also be underplanting those Sylvester date palms with cocoa plum and ficus green island. And then on the very right-hand side, we have a row of green buttonwood going in. And also on the right-hand side, there's a condominium there, so that would be a nice screen on the east side of the property. And we have met, we've met all the mitigation requirements that the city has set forth. And we are asking for approval for that.
Carol, could we just go back to the first picture, please, where you've got the three pictures of the plants, the trees you're... On the left, the picture on the left-hand side, the relevance of that tree, I can understand the others. Is that coming down as well?
That is coming down, and there's, there's a few of those along that west side. And we are going to replace those with, with pitch apples, which is a clusia. It's a full-size clusia. It's a native tree.
Okay. Thanks for that recommendation.
And all of the plant palette is pretty much native, except for the Sylvester date palms. But the silver buttonwoods are native, the pitch apples are native, and cocoa plum is native.
Thank you. Any questions for us? Could we have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve a level-two architectural site plan to permit the removal of certain existing landscaping and install new landscaping.
Second. Mrs. Power.
Yes.
Mr. Camfield.
Yes.
Chairman Murphy.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we move on to the first application of one of four applications for Blue Water Cove this morning. So Carrie, before we start, I think we need to let everybody know, this is a first for us in terms of having four level-three buildings next to one another. We've got another one later on, but it doesn't affect you. And I think one of the challenges, as you know, in our code is, one of the things we request is that it's compatible with the houses around the neighborhood, including Plaza Soleil. And also, the challenge is to differentiate them, especially in the development that, you know, you're promoting, it's yours. And that's the challenge that I think you're going to face. And the other one is, please, you saw the letter from Greg about the points to being addressed. Did you see that letter?
I have not. I just have your agenda.
Okay. This was on September 21st to Paul. And the only reason I'm mentioning that, there were specific points in that. And when the presentation's being made, I know we're going to deal with each one in particular. But it's the overall context of four brand-new buildings. That's what we're trying to take into account. And Greg covered each, with each application, the points that have to be addressed.
Okay.
So I'm sorry if that drops you in it because you haven't read it, or you haven't had it.
No, I haven't seen those specifics, and I... So anyway, Carrie Glickstein, Managing Member, Blue Water Cove. I am here to really introduce the people who will take you through each of the four separate applications. Presumably, you will have to review and approve each one or disapprove them individually. So to those points, which I think are more architectural, Mitch Koenig and Luis Rivera are here as the project architects. Also here is Kiko Iwata, the landscape architect, who will make separate presentations for the four applications, and of course, answer any questions, as I will as well, to the best of my ability. To your overarching point, when the project was approved, when I was standing here for that approval, we talked about the differentiation. We talked specifically about the limitations of the differentiation within Gulfstream's somewhat prescriptive code. I think we've done a really good job of doing that. It was made clear by me in the discussions with the commission and this reviewing board that these would not be fourteen one-off homes. We're not designing fourteen custom homes, and that there are limits within the code and with our abilities within the models that we're building to differentiate those. And I think that that was acceptable by the board then and the commission at the time. So I... So in your package, you have a streetscape and a site plan, which show you that differentiation. And the architects and the landscape architects can talk about that in more detail. But when the project was approved, specifically, we talked about there was going to be approximately three to four models for the, what I would call, the twelve dry lots. The two intercoastal homes would be individual custom homes, which really, for fourteen lots in the project, that would lead us to, I guess, for kind of general purposes, six distinct floor plans and elevations. Within that context of those six, there was going to be... We... There were, there were, there were options for us to make changes to each of those elevations in terms of roof type, roof color, trim type, trim color, garage doors on one side versus the other side, landscape hardscape, windows and doors, exterior paint color, fenestration. And that satisfied the board at that time and, and the commission. And I think that's what you're, that's what each of these packages projects and demonstrates. So again, I'm available for any questions that you may have. But, but I'm going to turn the meeting, I'm going to turn the presentation over to the architects and the landscape architects to go through the individual applications. And then if anything comes up, I'm here for that. Thanks, Carrie.
Hello, Mitch Koenig, Affinity Architects.
Luis, should we bear up? Any new architects?
Hi. So we've got our own cheat sheet because all these different styles and what elevations and the plans that we have are varied enough that we just can't keep them straight. Now, I don't know whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, but that's what we're doing. And I was just out at the site, and obviously, we've been dealing with this for all these years, getting this together. But just bear with us, and we'll start going through this with you, just to keep you sort of up to speed on what we're thinking. Okay? So this is more for me than you. So this first one here is an existing house. That's a Bermuda that's been approved. The house next to it is an existing house that's been approved and under construction, which is a West Indies. Across the street is an existing house that's under construction, which is an Anglo Caribbean. One-story, two-story, one-story. The new homes that we're adding are all one-story. Not that they want to do one-story, but the market says it's one-story. And you guys like one-story, so it's all working in the right direction. So on lot three, we are doing another Bermuda here versus there. Okay? The whole, we'll go through the architecture, but the whole syncopation, the added architectural features around windows versus shutters, and the roofs' colors, and the whole matting and everything else has been revised, window heights and everything else. Okay? And the direction of the garages and everything else has been modified. To the end here, this is going to be another Anglo Caribbean, which is down the street and across the street from the other Anglo Caribbean. The parapets have been obviously modified, the roof color has been modified, the windows have been modified, and other details have been modified. And the garages and everything else are what they are. So over here is the new elevation we've created, which is a Georgian architecture, which is obviously different than all of these. But we're going to introduce a different architecture at this point here, which is across the street from these different styles here. Lot 12, which is a West Indies, is down the street and across the street from the other ones, West Indies, which is a two-story. And obviously, the roof colors and everything have been changed along with the architectural details and build-outs and the architecture. This has the wood, a similar wood siding on the lower level, or here it's just on the upper level. Here it's on the ground level, it's stucco. And obviously, that doesn't apply to the situation here. But that's sort of the main variations that we're creating. By flipping the plan, by flipping the styles, introducing another style, and where it's located, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? Now I can go through the actual application, but just taking onto what Carrie was saying, this is how we're moving forward with this. Not to say that there might be a custom further on. We're working on lot eight right now, which is the intercoastal lot. And that obviously is going to be a total custom right there. So there's going to be variations, but these are homes that are going to be available for sale based upon the models. So people are coming there, viewing these furnished models, and then they can take their pick of what they want based on the model. So it's, that's where it sort of gets out of your ballpark on how you normally do things, but that's sort of how this is working from a business point of view, I guess. And that's what Carrie had said from the beginning. That's what they were intent, was what they were going to try to do. Okay, so now we go through the slides. Okay.
Do you guys already have a plan for the other lots in terms of what you're going to put?
No.
When you say a plan, have you decided in terms of the style?
Right.
Nothing, has anything been decided at all for those lots?
No. Other than we want to try to keep the same concept of what we're doing now, which is a variation. We're basically doing our own policing of nothing next to each other or across from each other, even modifying the style within the same style, and different colors and/or treatments and/or window fenestrations, and/or if there's any plan changes, obviously, on any of the others down the road. But, you know, at this point, there is not at this, in this submission.
I'm sorry, one more. Just, so you've got the twelve lots, aside from the two on the water. And you said that you're going to end up with basically what amounts to four different styles, so a repeat of three, right? Each style repeats three times?
Well, again, we introduced another...
Variation, but I mean, in terms of it's West Indies or it's what, you know?
Well, we, that's why we introduced another style, so now we have four that may be repeated, not just three.
Three times then, is the plan?
What's that?
So it's four different styles that are, we're going to see three of each.
For now, yeah. I mean, that's, and within your code, I mean, there's, we're pretty much running out of styles, so... I want, we don't want to get into a contemporary interpretation, which you've had to do before. Okay. So let's go on to the first house. Okay, so this is the Gulfstream Bermuda, which was a two-story.
One-story.
Oh, excuse me. This was the one-story being modified. So this here, do we have another slide where we picked up all the parts? The paint? No, I guess it's further on. Okay, so let's go back to this slide. I'll go through the architecture. Keep going back.
I'm trying. It's a delay.
Yeah. Okay. So the differences are here is, obviously, the arch is different. The whole fenestration around the windows with the louvers and the pilasters and the overhangs on the windows with louvers below versus shutters. And the width and the heights of the windows have been modified within the floor plan. And obviously, the roof color, the paint color. And, and there'll be miscellaneous things like the light fixtures and things like that, which will be modified also. And then the landscaping, we can, they can address with that on a separate presentation. That's obviously the location of it. Floor plan, site plan. Floor plan. There was a comment that they just handed with the vaulted ceilings and the cubic content. The existing house, which is, if we go back one, had a vaulted ceiling in there, which we did not count as cubic content on that house. The other homes that we've done in this community, we've never counted that either. So you're asking us to count that now as cubic content. So if that's going to be the requirement, we're going to have to modify the interior ceiling to be like the other house, more flat, and not have cubic content. That's going to be a comment. Because we're at the cubic content. That's the right word.
Right, so, you know, in Gulfstream, we're not Palm Beach, so we don't use cubic content. We use floor... That's all right. So we use floor area ratio, and it clearly states within the code that ceilings over fifteen feet account twice. So that's what the comment is. So, so I think that it was unclear, based on the plan, there were some vaulted ceilings. There was a comment about, or the plan, I think, had the roof pitch on it. But it was unclear, okay, vaulted ceiling. In some areas, I think, the plan had read not to exceed fifteen feet. So when it didn't say that in other areas, we just wanted some clarification. So if they're not over fifteen feet, then we don't need to worry about adjusting any, any square footage.
We'll confirm, but I think we...
And on that elevation, there's a original oak in there as well, isn't there? On the, on the landscape plan?
I'm sorry?
If you go back to the, basically where it's, you've got, on the layout where you've got the original oaks down the whole of Blue Water Cove, it's actually, it doesn't, in some ways, it's good it doesn't show it, because it'll obscure property.
Oh, yeah, we cleaned a little bit the elevation to show the architecture.
Yeah, there's a original oak according to the plan.
Correct. If we had shown all the landscape that's in front, it would be hard to read the architecture. Yeah, when you see the landscape presentation, you'll see what the real streetscape is going to be.
Right.
Okay, so yeah, I guess we're more present, architecture right now.
Okay. Thanks.
Same thing at the rear. So here's the colors. Again, the existing house has different colors. It has a different roof and the entry. And the window trim is similar. But that is basically the color palette.
Yeah. Let's go to here.
And the other comment was the, the window areas within the rear elevation or side elevations. And we'll reconfirm it, but we think we're in com... We comply. The same ballpark as we were with the other three approved plans. We're under forty percent, which is the allowable...
Okay.
The hot water heater comments and things like that, we can, we can address that stuff, too. It also said add shutters to side and rear elevations where possible. So here, we're using trim on these side elevations, be consistent with the front. So this architecture is not necessarily about the shutters. So if we did go back to the front, you'll see that there's no shutters in the front either. There's more louver kind of aesthetics there. And yeah, there we go. Perfect. So you can see the consistency of the sides and the rear, and then the front has the louver detail.
What's the detail underneath on the front elevation? On the top, under the, under each window?
Yeah, those are louvers in between pilasters. So they basically create an aesthetic out from the wall that gives a break on the exterior, underneath the overhang. And underneath the window is another louver that gets framed by the trim around the window.
On our Gulfstream Bermuda, Greg, is it prescribed to have shutters?
So it is prohibited not to have shutters. So there must be shutters, and typically, the requirements are contrasting color, functional, full height, and half the width of the window, traditional horizontal slat or panel type. So that, that is kind of inconsistent with what we're seeing here. I know that they were trying to make it different than the other Bermuda, but I think they can maybe do that with sticking with the requirements of the code, if, if that's what the board is interested in steering them toward more traditional shutter type as outlined in the code.
The reason for going down that route is the fact that, you know, as you say, we've only got a few codes, a few styles. And the Gulfstream Bermuda is one where it's, it's fairly prescribed in terms of what's required on, not fairly, it is prescribed what we require on the plan, on the design, sorry. Because, as it says in the letter as well, that shutters. Where could you incorporate them in order for it to retain or, you know, your plan to Gulfstream Bermuda building?
Yeah, as far as shutters, obviously, the rears and the side would be easy to add shutters to. The front, you know, with the detail that we provided, would be a little tougher to do that. So if that becomes a requirement, we'd have to revisit the front elevation with the detail we provided on that.
Yeah, in order for it to come into the Gulfstream, you know, category. And that's why I asked about what's the requirement for shutters, you know? Is it not, it's not optional?
We did note that in our pre-app. I just want you to know that we did tell them that they needed shutters. So they chose not to go with our suggestion.
Okay, so I was just, I guess we missed that, because we knew it was a comment on the other one. We missed it on this one from the pre-app.
Okay.
That, because, I mean, we went down a road pretty far on this one. Okay, so it'll look more like the other ones then. So...
Well, as you say, you've been creative in terms of the colors, the roof, whatever. It's, shutters can be, or they are in this category, a really enhanced property, which at the end of the day is, you know, you want it, we want it. So yes, shutters are required.
Okay, good. All right, we got it.
Thanks. Can we go back, please, to the slide that's just gone? The, I think it's called the Privacy Garden. Yeah. What's the height of that wall, please?
Six feet.
We've asked in the letter for that to be four feet. Is that correct, Greg?
Yes.
Yeah.
Existing ones are, what are the next existing ones? I believe we had six feet as well. Okay. All right, I think the existing ones are six, so I guess that must have been a common...
It's going to be early open shower, if it's, when it's four feet, because it does...
Yeah, but the existing ones are...
But the requirement from the planning point of view is four feet.
Okay. Understood.
How do you want to move forward now?
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, landscape?
Can you just get a clarification on that wall? Is that a building code, or is that a...
It's a zoning code. And that's... Because it can be seen from the street.
So if that wall were on the property line, it could be...
Six feet.
Six feet.
Six feet, yeah.
Which can be seen from the road.
So it can be six feet if it is alongside and rear property lines and location's not visible from the street. It's visible from the street, which it is. It can only be four feet. So maybe if the other homes were permitted, that was something that we, Rita had missed in her review. So...
All right. So I'm just trying to, okay, that's the confusion, why with the six. So is it that they're visible from the street?
And also, they impinge into the setback fifteen...
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it's visible from the street, right.
So just so I know for future, any, any wall that's visible from the street has to be four feet?
Correct.
But if it's on the property line, it can be six feet?
Correct.
Even if it's landscape? If it's...
Correct.
Okay, so the criteria, though, is just visibility from the street? Or is it not that it's... Okay. So the, the criteria though is just visibility from the street or is it not that it's connected to the house?
It has nothing to do with connected to the house. Yes, sir. Correct.
Good morning. This is Akiko Iwata, uh, Majestic View Landscape Architect. And, um, um, I, I want to add one more thing for outdoor shower. Um, this, uh, is option for the owner, correct? Uh, Reese told me that.
You're making a presentation of your landscape.
Yeah.
As the board, you need to make.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Um, okay. So, uh, we present four lots. Um, as architect mentioned that, um, all landscape style is, uh, each uh, much to each style, it's different, um, plant selection. And, um, before I get into details, uh, I just want to summarize that all lots landscape is cover, um, uh, landscape requirement and also exceed the requirement. So each one of them have different style, but um, in that different style, we include variety of selection for the plants. And, um, and also, uh, three street trees. That's, uh, all covered for each lots. And go to lot three, this is Bermuda style. Um, uh, one of the things that um, on north side. Yeah. On north side, existing fishtail palm, about 16 feet. That's a remains for screening. And a new perimeter hedge on the site is four to five feet height and crucia and portcalypus. That's a solid. Uh, the type of the hedge becomes solid hedge. And then three oak trees as a street tree. That's same as for all lots. And, um, because of this Bermuda style, we, uh, have like, uh, oak still palm. It's like a vertical elements in front.
Can I just hold you there while you talked about the live oak?
Yes.
What's height of those? What do they go in at, please?
Um, it should be, uh, covered.
I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to find it in.
Yes, I need to.
Yeah, there's a plant with
Yeah, it's a sixteen feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, plant least.
It, can you, can you explain what the sixteen feet?
Sixteen feet overall height.
Okay. And what's the seven foot number after that?
Seven foot number? Uh, this is curiatrunk.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the four inch caliper is that one?
Inch caliper is that trunk.
Yeah, the width, the diameter.
Right, right. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. So.
Just to confirm, what height did the, are the live oaks when they go in?
Live oaks.
Yeah. What height? How high?
It's, uh, overall is sixteen height.
They're planted at sixteen feet?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And, uh, all selection for the plants are much to, uh, Bermuda style. So we more, uh, focus on that. A little mix of vertical formal style, but also includes like, uh, um, coconut trees that the palm trees. And, um, of course we have foundation plants all around the building at front. And it's also a layer, higher slab and lower slab and ground cover. And, um, I think, uh, basically we have like, uh, some agave at front as accent plant emphasize then to the area. So that's, uh, if you have any comments or questions.
It's clear what you're hoping to put in. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? I'm not going on. Okay. So in terms of how we move forward here, it's a clear, um, application, but obviously there's the elements of the design that's been presented to us that we can't move forward. Well, we can't move forward with the fact of the wall and the fact of the shutters, which is clearly on Bermuda style. Ironically, there's a little more latitude in other styles, but it's very clear on Bermuda styles about shutters. Um, how would you like to proceed? Would you like to withdraw it and re-present or go through with a vote presented? We vote on it.
Um, if those are the two required changes, I would prefer that the approval be subject to making those changes rather than having to come back just
I understand that, Kerry. Understand that. Um, let me just go through the points, the garden wall, the tankless water heater, Greg, in your letter.
Yes.
It says.
I think that's easy enough for them to relocate. It, it's not really stylistic.
I'm just making sure because we've obviously given you feedback on what's here. I want to make sure that we've addressed.
I just need to make this set that.
And the glass facade you covered and the open front ones with the presentation for the landscaping. Um, okay. So that's our option in terms of moving forward. Do we want to see it again?
So normally I would caution the board with, um, approval or recommending approval of something that may require significant modifications. The only potential benefit of putting it through would be the unique situation of having four applications that are all very similar on the same street. Um, again, really the, the commission wants it to be buttoned up really nicely before they see it. So, you know.
They've made it very clear to us, basically everyone present, um, for those who haven't been here before. We review it, come with our decision. If we, um, decide that to approve the application, it then goes to the commission because this is a level three, um, application. And they've given clear guidance to us that they really want it packaged as the done deal, as the finished item. Uh, I know Kerry, that hasn't, that doesn't help you from a moving forward point of view, but it's really what we've been directed to do as a board.
It's really a burden on, more on you than it is on us.
Yeah.
Um, we've got to make the change anyway. So, um, uh, just so, just to reiterate though, the changes are the wall. Other than confirming the, the points in your letter. By the way, we just, we never got this letter. Um, uh, just we, this is the first time we're seeing this. Now I wasn't, that doesn't mean anything. Yeah, we, yeah, it, it, look, it, it doesn't. So, so we're trying to address this somewhat live. But in terms of, so excuse me if I'm missing something, but, uh, the shutters understood.
Yeah.
The wall, uh, clear direction, um, the notes on confirming the, uh, FAR that were in compliance, the window coverage. Um, was there, did I miss?
FAR, I think you found it.
Okay. I didn't, I know Trey brought it or something.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, okay.
Okay.
If you find them.
There was something about the ceiling volume that it was on a note before, but it wasn't on this one. So we'll make that clear.
Right.
Um, that would be their FAR issue.
And to make sure that, because obviously there are going to be future applications. Kerry, can we make it clear that, not clear, but could we send a copy of, would you like to see a copy of any letters that are sent out like this one?
No, it's not. Look, I, it, 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 this, um, the point I was making wasn't that, you know, we never got the letter. It was more like, I'm trying to address this so that when we, when you get the resubmital, we haven't missed anything. That's all I believe.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. That's, that's, that's it. Um, uh, for all I know, it's sitting in somebody's in basket right now and, and, or even my own. So, uh, um, uh, okay. So that one, from what I understand, the board is going to table.
Well, we haven't made a decision yet in terms of, yeah, a motion, but Kerry, have you got all the information you need?
I think so.
If this comes back and the way that we decided, you know, we've got a feeling, but not until we vote.
Understood. Is that, does that adequately summarize what the boards?
And also it will be, um, better received by the commission is the wrong way to look at it, but it's their expectation of, is this exactly what we?
No, understood. I, 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 I
I know you've been there.
I get it.
So the preference was for us to vote that withdrawal.
No, yeah, we would want to keep it, keep it moving. So we'd have a, a motion to defer to the next meeting. Uh, finally, or additionally, I, I know that we didn't talk about any of the hardscape. I know we talked about, you know, a lot of other things, but the, the hardscape. You know, in, in talking with Greg and, and other board members here, uh, it's, it, it seems like it's all identical on each of the projects. So is that something that you would want him to, um, to address as well? I just, before we move on to the next one, let's
That's a good point.
You know, is there anything else that we, we would want to kind of think about?
If it's, because different, as you say, we're in four categories. We're trying to differentiate, you know, sure, but a rock and a hard place. But the fact is because it's also the Blue Water Cove, when you look, it's, you know, we, we don't want that sameness. And, and it's a real challenge architecturally within the, within the designs and the footprints you're working with. We, we know that.
So just so I understand, uh, Trey, the point hardscape meaning driveway?
The, the, the sidewalk, up to the front door and then the walkway over to the garage.
It's in particular, I mean, what's so obvious is the front sidewalk, uh, sidewalk.
So just different materials is what we're talking about.
Is the front door? An opportunity to add a curb in someplace.
Yeah. They're all the same.
Okay. Don't think everyone else will feel this.
No, I, I'm, I'm, I'm leading you. I mean.
And I was actually out there on Friday last week and, and met with Joe and I think Paul was there. And I asked him, are, are these sidewalks or the front entryways going to change on any of these? And they said, no.
Well, certainly changing materials is easy enough. Um,
I think it's more of the design.
And I think on this one is where it really stands out. When you look at these individuals, as a general comic, when you look at the homes on their own, they're fantastic. And my personal, right? When you start to see them like this, that's when you start to see opportunities to vary it a little bit. And I would also say on the shutters, I would lean into that with color because that's the one thing that really pops out here too.
Yeah.
Is the lack of color variation.
Okay.
Um, yeah, if you look at lot one, it really pops. The shutters really, really pop.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, um, part of that, look, switching, I mean, driveways are driveways. I can't meander a driveway. So that's really off the table. I can switch sides of that. I can change materials, but that's really where it stops in terms of options. You know, a front walkway, again, it's kind of like a driveway. I can meander it, but for what purpose? So somebody has to walk on the lawn to get to the front door instead of doing a circle. Cause that's what's going to happen.
Some of the other properties in Placesselay, what they've done. Um, I don't know if this is an option on the landscaping. They've got low level, really low level, um, small hedges or something to break it up from the eye.
Ah, okay. Well, that's an option.
I've got this vision of looking straight down Blue Water Cove and seeing.
Got it. Okay. That's a good point.
Just a ladder.
So that makes sense. So, so to, to, to break it up with landscaping is a great suggestion because it's kind of hard. I mean, I've done this before. You try to be creative on a front entry. You know, you put a tree in the middle, for example, and then you do a, you know, you do these walkways around it. And, and a year later, the owner, the owner has cut the tree down and made the walkway straight to the door. So, you know, that, but the landscaping, if, if that's something you'll, you'll let us.
And perhaps from a, from a inspirational point of view on the landscape, if you drive around the rest of Placesselay, you'll see some of the solutions that people have come in to break up this ladder and stock, whatever color it is, Kerry.
I think that's a great idea. That's, that's, and that's a, that's a very pragmatic, uh, uh, helpful solution to that because I think in the end, and I, we said this at the beginning, we all want the same thing. Uh, we don't, we want it, you know, the code is difficult to work with because just the styles are limited. And then you've got other elements that make it so, so in that context, it's challenging. Um, over time, these will all look gradually different. Uh, but you're approving them as they are. So I understand your challenge as well. So uh, points taken on this one, on the home specifically, and also points taken generally on the landscaping that these entrances have to be different. And I don't see another way other than material.
Human nature is, human nature is we try and take the far, the shortest line between the sidewalk and the front door. That's human nature.
And, and just to make it clear to the board, when I was out there last week, the question I asked Paul and Joe uh, was all these front yards or of the three that are there, they all look the same. That the, the structure of the sidewalk and the entry and into the house and the landscaping. The landscaping, I said, is this going to be the same? And he said, including landscaping, yes, the landscaping going to basically be the same.
Was, uh, it doesn't matter who said that, but, um, uh, I can read you loud and clear that, that that's not, we, we will make those changes. So that's, that's a, that's a, that's a relatively easy fix. Um, and there's all kinds of, the good thing is in Florida, there's about a million species to work with. Um, uh, to, to make those look distinct. Um, all right. So I'm going to, in terms of the Trey, what was the, we're going to withdraw this or table it?
Uh, no, we're going to have the board vote to defer it to the next meeting. So we can just keep on track.
Fair enough.
Uh, we don't want you to have to pay another application fee unless you want to.
Well, Greg does, but you're a nicer guy. So appreciate that.
Good cop, bad cop.
All right. I, I will make the motion to defer this after the changes have been addressed and thank you.
Second amendment.
And so again, we're going to defer that to the, um, October twenty sixth meeting.
Okay. Mrs. Power? Yes, Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. Thank you. And now for the sense of deja vu, we go to the next application. Do you want to, Kerry, do you want to go, sorry, the team? Do you want to go down the route of deferring and, and addressing? Because for example, I know that on the other applications, there's a six foot wall, right?
Something.
I, I don't want to waste your time because you are going to have to re, because it's deferred, we're going to have to go through this full presentation.
If, if that could be summarized, in other words, if each house has something specific like that, that
We can do, we can do that if, but as long as you're on the understanding that as far as we know.
Fourth house, you've had some architectural.
In that case, yeah, I was just trying to streamline it for you because they're going to come back if we go down this route. Well, when we go down this route. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, fine. Okay. So in that case, can we move on to the second application, which is lot four?
Okay. So we went through the general orientation before. So other than that, um, this is the, uh, variation of the existing model that's across the street. Um, and this obviously has different parapets, different roofs, different overhangs, different shutter colors, um, different, uh, details that the parapet would like fixtures added and things like that, um, within there. And all the other comments are noted if there's anything different.
Okay. Just go through my notes. So we had reduced the privacy to four feet. Cathedral ceilings, you discussed before.
Oh, thanks.
Tankless water heater doesn't come in. And just to confirm the glass on the rear facade, I saw in here, it says a thirty nine. Um, that shutters to rear and sides. Yeah, thirty nine percent. So that covers that, address that point.
We'll confirm.
Yeah. I just think the point about the colors needs to be looked at comprehensively.
Yeah.
And thought through. Just to give it some variation.
Now on this, uh, uh, rear and sides, we do not have shutters um, on those windows and it's not required on this style. Just want to confirm that we're okay.
Yeah.
Shutters are street facing anyway.
Yeah, you've got the shutters. Yeah.
Okay.
Got them. Yeah.
Okay, got it.
And at the moment, what color do you envisage at the moment? It's slightly different on the one we've got here, which is the And at the moment, what color do you envisage at the moment? There's slightly different on the one we've got here, which is the color spec. I think that's the.
I never trust the rendering anyway.
Okay, fine. So we're going on this one. Dark gray.
Yeah.
We have.
Yeah, we've been with the color palette is is trying to be a little more muted instead of a lot of contrast to it. Same thing with the body color. And then we're trying to stay with three roof colors and have those variation between the styles and the architecture. So we were trying to be a little less busy with some of that stuff on purpose. So and if you go out to the existing homes, you can see the theme of it. One's a little more gray or one's a little more browner and one's a little more white. But they're within a very light palette. And then one has a darker shutter of a blue and then has a lighter shutter of a blue. And there's another, you know, shutter color for the other one, you know, so that's the thought process moving forward without having some very strong colors with a lot of blues and and blue body colors and contrasting shutter colors and things like that. So that's maybe something we can maybe be more aggressive is what you're trying to tell us to be more aggressive on the color variations.
Aggressive is a horrible word. How about, how about inspire? Okay. Any points? No, no, it's fine. Okay. Is there any other guidance where you need to get before we make a motion?
Run the same, well, with this one is the.
So you know, staff, we we see this past the ARPB and we see what the commission does with some of these applications. So there is an issue with excessive similarity, perhaps relative to the to lot fourteen. Now, when staff reviewed this house, we liked it very much, we still do. But the excessive similarity relates to apparently visible identical front or side elevations, substantially identical size and arrangement of doors, windows, porticos or other openings or breaks in elevation. So if you look at those two houses, the windows are in the exact same place, the the design elements, right? And then it also it also includes reverse arrangement, right? So it can't be substantially similar, even with, even if it's flipped. They have put this far enough away that that arguably does not apply, but I'm just, you know, sort of thinking about getting this home approved and what if any suggestions you could make that would be beneficial to make sure that they're redesigning it or doing any changes once and then they're getting it through.
I think you've made the point because four and fourteen are about as far away as lots as you can get in terms of style. So I think if you can really go down the guide, the route you said, to differentiate it as much as possible within the code, you've got a palette of colors which are approved. And so the eye will go to that. And you've got, you know, that those are your tools within that category of that style. Because you are confined, you've got fourteen, we know about two being bespoke, but four and fourteen, it's about as far away as you can get. And I think if you can, if you can be as creative as you can, inspired as you can, taking your point, Trey, I know the commission have made it very clear that they don't want just flipping some of that, but try and, it's a challenge. We understand it's a challenge. But it's within that category of, you know, what you've gone with.
So. Well, I think it's going to get especially challenging when you start looking at the other lots because it's going to be very close, right? You'll have one more style like this. So how do you make this one even more different when you've got another house, it would be closer in the other lots of the same style?
I can see you gray cells are really working this one out. We look forward to getting it back. I'm presuming, but we, I think that we need it to come back. We do need it to be as different as possible within the confines and criteria of an Anglo Caribbean.
Okay.
Okay. Points we can give.
Cover it.
Yeah, I mean, architecturally.
Trey, that when you were reading from that differentiation, where was that?
It's in sixty six, one forty four of the code. It's called excessive similarity.
Rob's good. So let's try to finish this.
Yeah, that answers that question. I'm just trying so so that we leave here with, we're all, you know, the expectations have managed or have been managed. You know, you know what to expect from us. We think we know what to expect in a in a in a board review. I'm still a little unclear in terms of we, I've heard we like the architecture, it's as far away as possible. Make maybe some color, some trim color changes or some, is that, is that kind of what I'm getting?
Okay, anything that you can change within the criteria to make it as different as possible, even though you've got the biggest distance between the two, that's will help it differentiate.
Even in the landscaping, I mean, you know, if you look at the the pictures of the way the palms are laid out, right? I mean, even if you can create some variation.
Yeah, that's a good point, and that's an easy one.
Yeah.
Yeah, like framing the door, there's a palm on each side. There happen to be different palms when you look at it on here.
Yeah, when you look at fourteen, sorry, four and fourteen landscaping elevation is nearly identical.
Okay, and that that shouldn't have happened. Yeah, that that should not be the case. So and it won't be the case when this comes back. And in fact, I'll see what we can do about the existing three homes that are already landscaped about, because that kind of sets up the the community, if you will, that if those three are identical.
Right. And the other thing I'm going to ask on the landscaping side, Kerry, the reason I asked about the height of the live oaks, the ones that have gone in at the moment, I don't think they're sixteen feet.
Okay, that that I will check. There has been somewhat an internal debate on whether to plan out the whole street so that there is growing consistency, you know. Hopefully, we're not there that long to where it's going to matter, given the 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 slow speed of live oaks. That we kind of moved away from because we don't know where the driveway and the walkways are going to be. But that's a big deal for me, so I will ensure Malcolm the trees are to spec and if they're not.
Great.
We will, because we've already made, based on, I think, the staff has already pointed out some other deficiencies and I know that the landscaper was trying to get it done with with fewer mobilizations, but but I will verify that.
Thanks. And and just as an FYI, because this is the first time I think you presented to the board, we always ask for what's it going to look like on the day it's planted, not, as you say, down the line, and we're all, you know, in our dotage. It'll be this big. It's really, what does it look like on day one? And also from the the great people who are going to, you know, buy these, they they want to know, what does it look like on day one?
Of course.
Yeah.
All right.
So that's a request. That's a request from myself.
And did I properly, in your mind, summarize what deficiencies we need to address for this specific application as well? Was there anything else other than?
No.
Okay, all right. So we'll defer that as well.
Do you want to motion to defer?
Trey, Mr. D'Zaro and I did meet with, you know, the mayor. The mayor was concerned about the, some of these houses being too similar. Didn't have any suggestions as to how.
Yeah. Change your code, change your code.
I'm not sure that that was. But I'm. Because we just changed our code to the similar to similar that I think is kind of mirrors palm beaches.
We already had excessive similarity. We added dissimilarity. So
Right, so.
Has to be similar but not dissimilar.
Well, I think, you know, you've encapsled, Malcolm encapsulated it perfectly here in in the first application where we've tried to differentiate it, but we're using elements that aren't allowed with that style. I think that if you ask nine out of ten people, do those elements look good on that house? They're going to say they do. So I understand the mayor's concern. I understand what the code says, but we can't be held to a higher standard than what somebody coming into the town of Gulfstream with a single lot is asked to do.
Well, I mean, you made a design choice to put the garage doors on the side, right? You could have put them on the front elevation.
Nobody wants that.
Of course not, but I'm just saying those, you're you're boxing yourself in. All the lots are the same size. All of our codes are restrictive, but you've you've designed to what you want to sell, and that's all very similar. Right? So we are all single story homes, right? So then they're going to be similar because they're all single stories. You have driveways on the side because you have a garage on the side. So that's going to be similar similar orientation. So we're working with you as best we can, but to insult the code and say that it's too restrictive, I mean, we sit up here and we see different homes every month of the year. So.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm not saying it's too restrictive. I'm just making the point that it's limited.
So can I?
And.
Sorry, Kerry.
That's okay.
And that's, it's absolutely accurate.
So I'm going to give you an example on lot fourteen and lot four. With the gables on lot fourteen, you're proposing a more square gable. And if you look at lot four, it's round, it's more Dutch, what you'd see in the Dutch. So you've tried, I can see where you really have tried to differentiate within the code. Right? That's that's being more than acknowledged here. It's it's, I think it looks great, and that's my personal opinion. But the fact that you attempted to make it slightly differently stated, large gables. So I think in terms of confinement, we absolutely understand that you are partly tied down, right? That's the only way I can say. But we're asking the professionals to be as creative, inspired as possible. And the guidance we give, the reason we're here is to try and facilitate appropriate development within Gulfstream. But that's for us to give the guidance, the help to get it through. But in terms of the specifics, it's really you guys.
That's our problem.
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah.
I think the landscaping is a big one, you know. That's a, and I think that that sometimes it's unfortunately the last thing you look at.
Yep.
You know, and and when you're you're so wrapped up in what the house needs to be and what what people are looking for and and so anyway, that that that's, that to me is low hanging fruit in terms of, and some of the other items you mentioned, I just, I just want to caution. Ms. Power brought up a great point about, okay, well, what happens with, you know, the the rest of these? And I would say that, look, we we want the same thing the town does. The last thing we want, I mean, is this term cookie cutter has been used. There's nothing cookie cutter about these homes. I think the, to Trey's point, the similarities are what we're going to have to work on. And you've given us some tools, the code has some tools. And I think we've got guidance on the first two applications. Maybe let's get to the third and.
Well, we've got to do some work here first to carry on that one in terms of emotion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'll make a motion to defer to the October twenty sixth meeting so that we can see the revised plans.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Power? Yes. Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. And so we move on to the third application.
Just give some moments. When you're ready. Okay, sure. Lot twelve, West Indies, architecture. One story versus the other West Indies is a two story.
Sorry, I've got lot thirteen is our second application. Is that third application? The Georgian one. Yeah, I've got the Georgian one is our third.
Okay, so this is.
If you want, we can.
We can take them out of order.
Yeah. It's just on its toes.
We can open up our packets.
Okay, put my Georgian hat on. Okay. So this is the new style that we introduced to the other three. One story. Hip roof. I'm trying to make a a more of a classical statement on this architecture with the shutters all similar, the windows all similar, creating a colonnade at the front entry. And the the soffit detailing and the facial detailing and everything else carried through.
I just. By the way, straight away, the impression of that you've done with the columns and it really it looks, it just looks good. I know that's not, it's not a quantitative statement.
And different.
And different.
It does. Very nice.
Really.
I know we're going to go into the weeds, but just the first striking is that that looks different.
Yeah, from a massing point of view is sort of what you're looking at, you know, forty thousand feet.
And also, if you look here, the landscaping around the footpath, the hardscape into the, from the sidewalk into the front door, you've got low level here which breaks it up. So if you stood at the end, you wouldn't actually see much of the the steps.
Yeah.
Okay. So do you want to go through it or just?
We're, we will address all the other comments which are similar.
Yeah, okay, let me just check that letter, as I said. To make sure that we've covered everything that was in the letter as well.
While Malcolm's looking at, I will make one comment as I've got these laid out on top of each other. Color wise, there's, again, very little variation. I know that they're different names, but unless you put them side by side, it's really tough to tell the difference between them.
That's actually good to know.
Yeah, that Babo Mist and the Egypt White are very, very similar in terms of the exterior.
So that would perhaps be great exercise. What Rob's done here is it's 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 clear, it really that's helped you get as far away from the each other as you can within the prescribed colors you're, you can work with.
The color and landscaping will certainly be something.
And appreciate the fact that you're trying to appeal to the masses as these are being built for people that don't know that yet, but I think the colors or the shutters are the opportunity to really make them pop a little bit.
So I agree. Okay. Privacy garden, tankless. Right, there's one question here we did have on the design front. Oh, no, sorry. No, that's on twelve. Yeah, it's on twelve. Sorry, I jumped. There's no other guidance other than what we've already given you.
Is that a requirement of the style? The shutters?
Yeah, we do. It does ask for shutters. Can you go to the side elevation, east or west? Please. Next one. There. That's, I know it's side, but we do request if it shutters on there would, you know, it's a pretty bland, pretty bland. I'll take the pretty out. It's bland. Because it does, actually, in Greg's letter, it says, add, and I know you haven't seen it, shutters to the side and rear elevations where possible. So again, if you can consider that, please for that.
And again, it was noted in the pre app.
Okay.
That they needed shutters.
So if you can take that.
They chose not to go.
Okay.
No, we've had discussion, not with any of the applicants here, but over the last, I don't know, few years about doors and wood and glass and everything. I just want to make sure that this door is acceptable based on your, you're looking at it. I mean, I don't see any issues, but it had come up with with staff a few years ago about percentage of glass and.
I like it.
Okay, I think this.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't have an issue.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
I remember.
Yeah, I know the door you're talking about in particular.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, Trey. Okay.
Oh, sure. I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to defer this to the October 26th meeting.
Second that.
Mrs. Power?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Chairman Murphy?
Yes. And so we move on to the fourth application, which is lot 12. For them to prove the point. We haven't got this. Yeah. I think what you did in terms of. Presentation, sorry, for the next one.
Giving us a lot to think about.
We haven't finished yet. Going to give you more. Okay, so lot 12, West Indies style. If you can talk us through it. So basically, it's everything you said. One of the things that jumps out, I can see the way you've got the shutters on the front door. In my own mind, I'm not sure if they, ironically, they look strange because you've only got it on the front door. And that's just my.
Yeah.
That's just my theory. Because I can see what you've done with the, the supporting eaves to wall. What would you call those?
Brackets.
Yeah, brackets. I can see what you've done, and it definitely makes a feature. But I'm not sure about the, the shutters on the front door, ironically. Because unless, unless that perhaps the contrast needs to be more or.
Personally, I don't want to get into the discussion of my, my opinion versus the architecture.
Well, that's, this is just, yeah, that's what I'm saying. From an architectural point of view, I've put down in my notes that the shutters, it's only on the entrance, whereas lot two, which is obviously up and running, you've got shutters on there on your, on the lot two that's presently there.
Well, and I would say the, the two-story version with the shutters, that is a nice differentiator on that house. It does look, once those shutters are up, I mean, I live right there, so I see these all the time, and that looks, that looks very nice. So there's an opportunity to incorporate, whether it's the shutters or not, to incorporate that color. I don't know if that would be an opportunity.
Yeah, because I didn't know whether shutters were a requirement on this architectural style. So that's, we were trying to differentiate not having shutters on everything, because then that becomes a little bit aggressive.
Those are the styles. Sorry, just putting out the stars.
Yeah.
Yeah. It looks insipid compared, that's, that's what it is.
Yeah.
It looks.
Yes.
Insipid compared to, you've got a great contrast between the roof.
Yeah.
And the wall, but it just looks.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so a mass discussion on this one.
I was saying I like the color.
You like the color? No, I know, it's opinions. Yeah, because I, and I, like is the wrong word. I can appreciate the, the design in terms of the confines of the West Indies style. I absolutely can understand that. It's just, let me just check something, please. Lot two versus lots 12.
Yeah. Well, it's just interesting, I'm sorry, I'm flipping through, but you guys have beautiful shutters on the back.
Yeah.
Looks very pretty. And maybe even on the sides.
But this was the, as far as we knew, it'd be only two that had shutters all around. That's why we didn't do it in other designs because they were not required, although they were noted as, it looked good, but it doesn't necessarily.
Yeah, it's preferred. Yeah. And also, the other, see, the other thing we've got here is different to the, not the last, but one presentation. Lot two and lot 12 are quite close. In fact, they're nearly opposite one another, and they're both West Indies.
Why we tried to do the differentiation with brackets versus shutters.
Yeah, can see that.
Colors and versus one story versus.
Yeah. And there's the contrast of the roof, the tile. Yeah. Which is why the door, again, pops.
For, for example, you can't put shutters on the front of that house with the bracket.
No, I know, I know you can't.
And we use the brackets to distinguish it. So at some point, it's got stock.
Yeah. No, you cannot. Obviously, you can't put shutters because, yeah, to keep brackets, and the brackets are a differentiator ironically from what's just across the street.
I think it's just the location of where the brackets are is the differentiator, because both stories have brackets.
Yeah.
Both houses, sorry.
It's between the windows instead of up against.
Oh, I can see.
See that?
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's just a, where are they?
So in terms of guidance, can I just confirm, please, Trey, that shutters are preferred, not required for West Indies?
Right, right, we don't have anything that's specific called out for that.
Saying the Bermuda, that's very specific.
Correct.
I believe the only one that was a specific one.
Bermuda, it is.
And, and this, this, this half, you know, whatever this style is, I don't know what it is, if they're looking like siding or if it's supposed to be brick, I just can't tell the detail. Can we, can we talk a little bit about that and how that applies?
Yeah.
To the code?
Sure, so the half elevation treatment is called, that is prohibited, and the sort of change from, you know, that, that design on an entire wall and then having a gap in it not appearing on another wall, so there's some sort of differentiation is preferred. So that just was something that was in the code that I wanted to address, and it's, it's on the last page of the letter.
Yeah.
And that photo is taken from the, from the code book.
Yeah. And you haven't seen us, obviously.
No, but I see it now, and I mean, literally, this is one facade that does not have any breaks. This has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven breaks along a facade, lower, higher, lower, higher, within the two plate heights. So that is more like this, in our opinion, than that. Because this is just, I understand this, if we just had one facade with a differentiation in an entry, then we'd say, okay, you got us, but we're really being very aggressive on these different, I hate that word, okay, I got it. Very intentional about having different heights within the two heights that are allowed.
And that's a difference.
Yeah, and also. What we did was, you know, the difference is, I guess, is that these brackets are not at the entry.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, we put the shutters there. You know, we could take these brackets and put them at the entry like we did on the first house we showed you, where we had the louvers everywhere. But now we can't do the louvers on the first one, so, you know, if we do the brackets, we'll do the brackets here versus the shutters, you know? Or, you know, so that's why we tried to differentiate the entry, so it feels like an entry instead of walking into a wall.
What's the, sorry, you've got the, the frontage in terms of slats, panels, the way, what are they actually made of?
Those are made out of faux wood type of thing.
Right.
Yeah.
But the siding look?
Yeah, that's actually the stucco. That's what I just wanted.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I was just thinking, what's it actually made of? It's just lined in the stucco.
Yeah, the stucco is actually better than real wood.
Yeah. No, I just wondered, because here, looking at it, it could be made of wood. Okay, so.
Yeah. We're not doing corner boards. We like the beveled siding and everything else wrapping and everything is a nice, clean, simple look, timeless.
Okay. Let me just see.
Landscaping, we've covered this.
Yeah.
We've, maybe my, my own comment with this one, so.
Let me just see if I've got some notes. No, it was the shutters on the entrance only. And obviously, there's, there's an original oak just on the elevation on here immediately on the front door, near enough. According to, according to this street plan or street layout, there's one immediately to the right, if you look at it, of the pathway from the sidewalk to the door. It's, I think you're going to walk through the tree, actually. What you were saying, Kerry, about people chop down trees and just walk through.
I've seen it.
Well, I think we'll keep an eye out if that's original oak, because it doesn't vanish. No, I'm joking about that. It's just that on the landscape plan, at some point, you've got it on the, the other, the plan.
Lot 12?
Yeah.
You're talking about the streetscape oak?
Yeah, streetscape, yeah.
It's calling on an existing, because I don't think there's.
No, no, not existing. Okay, no, 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 no.
This one, right here.
Okay, that's, I'm just saying that that is really in the front. Okay. No worries. Is there anything else you need from us on this application?
No, we assume we'll get minutes or.
Yeah, their public record. Yeah. In that case.
I'll make a motion to defer this to October 26th.
Second that.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Chairman Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you, thanks, Trey. Thank you, Greg. Thanks, Renee.
What I suggest is that before. In fact, can, sorry about that, we're just finishing off on the last.
You want me to catch?
Yeah, please. If anyone wants a two-minute recess, you're very welcome while we just clear the decks.
Yeah, I know. Well, once, once they went, you know, they started talking about it, it's like halfway through the meeting, I'm like, I'm just going to mark these.
That's a smaller.
It's okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's. Yeah, sorry about that.
In that case, let's reconvene the meeting, call it back to order, and we move on with our next application for 9:30 and more rough.
We have a little bit of a program problem where it took all the architecture drawings on the PowerPoint and rotated. So if you could refer to your 11 by 17s, I'd be better.
Do you need one?
I'm going to.
You just got to go.
Can I use yours? So first of all, thank you for the support staff. They were great, always available and always helpful. So we've met with them, I've gone through all the window percentages, the level changes, we've added shutters where requested, so I'm sure you guys have already reviewed it. All of our percentages, our windows stuff. I have a question on the other one, the one that was just presented. All those central sliding glass doors didn't have mullions. Is that possible? On every one of their rears, they didn't have mullions in the sliding glass doors. Is that a option?
We'll make sure that we get them for that.
Well, let's clarify that, because mullions are always supposed to be street facing.
Yeah.
And.
Not rear?
I don't know.
Unless it's on the water.
I don't know if the code makes.
Well, they added them on the rear and they had them on the side. They just didn't have them on the center.
The mullions.
I don't know if there was an exception.
I don't know if there's a requirement in the back of the house if it's not on the water.
Either way, we should all know, but we prefer not. On the water. I'll do them on the front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're verified.
Okay.
I actually like them on the front, it's just, it's rear, they block the water view.
Depending on the clarification, if it's determined that it is, can we make sure that the architect gets that message, because otherwise, we don't want to spin their wheels again. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So.
Okay. So. Page. First page is really just the overall site plan, the overall front elevation. The house, the garage is at a little bit of an angle, as you can see on the site plan, which is page two. That's really just to follow the lot and to open up the house for presentation. I think the end page, that one, although, go back on. Although it's rotated, that shows the existing house profile footprint and the proposed. Next year, our locations in the neighborhood, I'm sure you're all familiar with it, we're at the, at the end of a finger canal. And on Emerald Row. All of our square footage calculations, we fall within, and we are taking that credit.
Especially.
One-third credit for the, and, and you'll see in my square footage counts, there's, at the very, very top right of that sheet is that no count credit. And I made sure that it's, um, half the size of our other available covered patio area, so we have one-third.
Yeah, if you go with that, you give up. But if you go with the special exception, you.
Yeah.
You, you look, it's not a win when I say win-win, it's obviously.
Yeah, we sure like to get it, but yes. So you can see on that one, there's the three square footage requirements, and I have checked mine since. The next one's really just floor plans, first floor, second floor. If you have any questions on that. And then all the elevations with all the window openings and, and percentages.
Yeah, I've got a, sorry, we got to A8, I know we're flying through.
A8 is the front elevation.
Yeah, that's the one.
See my elevations with, um, we're only allowed four eve elevations.
Four breaks.
Right, so I'm showing those, I'm showing my maximum overall.
I do have a question about the.
I know, see? The front elevation is at 14 feet.
Yeah, the shutter, looking at it, the, the vertical shutter as opposed to the, sorry, the horizontal, the one that's like cat flap, can't describe it any other way.
Bahamas shutter, right?
Yeah.
A little Bermuda.
Is that the size of the window? As in, is it?
Up to the top of that, yes, it doesn't stop.
So basically, no, so basically, that shutter would, if, if, I know it's whether it drops or not, that would cover the window.
I didn't want it to, because that way the shutter would be way too big.
I know, that's what I thought. It's just that I think we have a pretty clear definition on what a shutter should be for.
Full length of window?
It is for Gulf, you see Gulfstream Bermuda does have specific, really, you know, it's, it's a much tighter.
I wonder if I narrow the window and just put normal shutters on it.
Okay, have you got that definition, please, Trey? The one we talked about?
No, I remember.
Yeah.
For the full length.
That's it. Yeah, it's just that one jumped out.
Yes, and I don't mind doing that.
Okay. And there was an one other. Yeah, the, sorry, we've got the, the left side elevation. You've got, you've got a window, high-level window without, without.
Oh, yeah. Well, I couldn't put a shutter on that because it hit the roof. And it says where possible, that's not possible.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's on the side. Okay. Can I ask what the detail is of the, on the right side elevation, your two windows, seven square feet, seven square feet? That's the best way to identify. It's, is it a break? Is it clear glass at the top?
Yeah, it's clear glass at the top. That's actually the kitchen transom, or the transom windows with the scored stucco below, just as a.
Okay.
A place for vines to grow up.
Right. Right. And so the stucco is just basically.
Well, either that, or if it would be tile, or I'm trying, I'm trying to create a pattern there that fills in that spot, and then they can landscape accordingly.
Yep. Sorry, I interrupted.
It looks like he has bushes.
And just to confirm, the hardscape does meet the percentage. I think someone, there was a. Yeah, I saw that somewhere. Sorry, we've just been inundated so many pages.
There was a, there was a 20-foot, 20-foot cool.
And the reason for asking is it went, you know, the numbers there, I've seen it somewhere when I was reading through it, but it's just when you look at it here and you've got the pool deck and that's a significant driveway, you know, a turning circle and whatever, I just wanted to confirm that the hardscape. C1, second pitch. Thank you very much. Fantastic. Yep. Great, thanks. I couldn't read that.
It's pretty small.
That's very small. And so it's the same question here about, um, is the elevation on, on the, so landscape plan elevation as opposed to the last page of our present, of our. Sorry, come.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Can you come down? Sorry, Renee, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, could you come down the last slide?
L7.
That's the one.
Yes.
That's the one. Wonderful. Um. You probably heard that we make a, you know, we're really focused on the landscaping as it will be on day one. Will the, are those original oaks? Those checks?
They're, um, are proposing four new oaks.
Yep.
We're setting them at 18 feet overall height. These are shown at 22 feet.
Okay.
So it's close.
Yeah, that's fine.
Somewhat of a growing appearance, but not unreal.
Well, I made a guesstimate in terms of your, top of your roof is 30 feet. It's, it is.
Yeah, so these.
Yeah, and so sort of that in proportion is 20 feet. So, great, that's, that's, but you're looking at 18. Great. Thanks. Yeah, that's, that's a significant height.
Yeah.
No, that's, 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 that's right. Okay. Questions?
None for me.
Can we talk about the, the exception request?
Yep.
So what is the, why is there an exception request for the FAR?
For the, for the.
Special exemption.
Extra patio square feet?
Is it extra, that's what it's for, is extra patio?
For the 98 square feet.
I've taken that before and I haven't had a problem with that. The last project I did, you guys granted.
Yeah, we were just asking what, what was it for, not the.
Oh, it's just a little, that, if you look in the, in the square footage section, it's, it's just a little additional patio in the back. Page.
But then to get that, they give up interior.
Okay.
Yeah, not roofline, but interior.
It's a trade-off. Eight-five.
Okay.
Yep. And the requirement is I have to have twice as much available regular patio.
That's the extra. Okay.
So I think this, I think this complies, other than that window.
Yep.
Which I'm willing to adjust.
Right, so if we move forward, one of, if we, obviously the motion we need, but going back to the commission have said they want the done deal. However, if the, if the only thing we're asking for is that one window.
Right.
And that is the only thing we agree amongst the board.
Yeah, I think that would be.
I don't, no, I'm just raising it because it's very clear, we were told to, as is. But I, I feel in this situation, because it's so small.
No, sure, I mean, if we were even talking about colors, I would say, keep it here, because you want to make sure that the color that is eventually presented is.
This changes by the end of the day if you want.
You know.
Now, we, we're going to make a motion now. The commission will see it, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, as long as you've got, should we approve it? As long as the commission has, obviously, what it's.
I'll give you, yeah.
Yeah. Colors, I think it's a good-looking house. I do, yeah, I agree. Any more questions? Points? In that case, could I ask for a motion, please? And sorry, motions, motions for.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody.
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve a level-three architectural site plan based on finding that the construction of a 5,432-square-foot Gulfstream Bermuda two-story, single-family dwelling with a three-car garage and swimming pool meets the minimum intent of design manual and applicable review standards with the following condition. Any minor modifications to the approved landscaping shall be submitted to the town manager for review and approval, and any major modifications shall be brought back to the ARPB for review and approval prior to commencement of landscaping.
With the exception of the window. Do we need to add something in about the window or no?
With the exception that the window and shutters will be changed to be.
Stair tower windows will be revised.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Power, yes, Mr. Canfield.
Yes.
Chairman Murphy.
Yes.
When, when do you need those back? When?
Yeah, yeah.
There's more?
Yeah, no, I said, it's.
I need them before next Friday. Oh, sorry. Hold on, Renee.
I forgot to flip the page, yeah, pretty much. I'd like to make a motion to approve a special exception for section 7072B to exceed the maximum permitted FAR by 98 square feet.
Second.
To make a motion to approve.
No, we've got, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, we gotta do them separately. Mrs. Power. Yes, Mr. Canfield.
Yes.
Chairman Murphy.
Yes.
Sorry, it's been a long morning.
It has.
A motion to approve a demolition permit to demolish the existing structure.
Second, Mrs. Power. Yes, Mr. Canfield.
Yes.
Chairman Murphy.
Yes.
Finally, I can make a motion to approve a land clearing permit to clear some of the existing vegetation from the building site.
Second, Mrs. Power. Yes, Mr. Canfield.
Yes.
Chairman Murphy.
Yes, I'm with that.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a clarification on the rear mullions then?
We'll, we'll provide that, yes, they are. Yeah, they have to be under a certain square footage, breaking it up, so if it's a large, correct.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And so we move on to another first for this board. We've never had to consider the subject matter of this application.
Mr. Stride, good morning.
Good morning.
If you could stay your name for the record.
Yes, Steve Stride, happy to be here again, so good morning. Thanks for having me. Hopefully, this is last time.
Welcome back once again.
Yes.
So, um, you know, Mr. Stride is just looking for, you know, I, his, you know, we, we've seen his, his house a few times. It had some modifications to the landscaping. We recently had a change to the town code to allow artificial turf in certain limited circumstances. So as part of that, we've provided a copy of the ordinance, because it's, it's not in the code book, and also exerted that into the staff report. Mr. Stride has provided the town with a sample of that, and we also have a PDF that outlines some of the specs of the proposed artificial turf that he's using.
Yep.
So with that, um, I, you know, I don't know if you guys want to have any discussion or have any questions of Mr. Stride. The, the location is really the, the big factor.
Yep.
I'll go ahead and continue on my soapbox, since this is something that we may see a lot in the future. So it is located on the, the north side of the property, where you may be able to see it from the waterway, which is prohibited, but it is in a limited area, and there is a lot of landscaping, I believe, directly between the water and, and where this is proposed. So it was the feeling from staff that, that you could not see it from the waterway. Unlike maybe some other properties that have a lot of open area that, um, you know, in the backyard, you certainly could not locate it, but again, it's, it's limited, it's on the side yard, it doesn't peek out. So it would be visible anywhere else, you'd have to really be, you know, looking at it from, from the water, straight on. But it's, uh, it's covered by landscaping. And again, we have a number of other criteria that staff will review before, you know, sending it over relative to the material that is to be used, things like that.
And this obviously stays with us as a level two.
That's correct, it's a level two, so.
So the.
With great power comes great responsibility.
This is true. And great questions. So here's one. Um, no, just, can I just confirm on the position that it's, I saw in the, the ordinance, updated ordinance, that it says three feet, because I couldn't see a measurement from the property line. We just. I, I, I'm assuming it says, it's just.
I think it is. That's a good question. I didn't check that.
It's just that it's, it's clearly in the ordinance.
Yes, okay, we can.
But basically.
I think it is.
Yeah, basically, just. Yeah.
We'll make sure of this.
Yeah.
That's a condition of.
Yeah, I'm shocked that it's not. Yeah, I just, yeah, I, I would be, but I just wanted to make sure that.
We have some rail palms that are, the proper line rail palms, and then this starts.
Okay. That's what we can. It was, it's just when I read through it. We're all an expert in polyethylene.
I know.
Polyethylene, what I learned by reading through the ordinance and the notes and your PDF.
I had no idea about all this stuff, to be honest.
And I didn't until I read it. Okay. If there's no more questions, can I have a motion? Can we have a motion, please?
Find it. Okay, a motion to approve a level-two architectural site plan to permit the replacement of St. Augustine grass with artificial turf on the north side yard.
Second that.
Mrs. Power. Yes, Mr. Canfield.
Yes.
Chairman Murphy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's the first approval of that.
That's right.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, it's the first, it's the, the first legal artificial turf in town.
Yes, yeah. Thanks, thanks. And so now, um, we move on to items by staff, which we're, we're going to modify, not modify it, but we're going to make sure that the board, and it's on record, of any modifications or work that have been done, because in our motions, we say, if any minor modifications, they can be done by staff.
Right.
But I want to make sure that everybody knows about it. So, items by staff.
We don't have any.
Great.
But so I, so we do have two items to bring up.
Oh, like I said, we don't have any.
And, uh, I, I don't know if we'll maybe put this on the agenda as specific properties, but we had some minor modifications of Lemon Hill, and then also some, a very minor modification to the overall Blue Water Cove sort of site plan. So there is a split rail fence that is surrounding like the, the, the entry circle driveway part before you get to the street. So Kerry Glitstein said, the landscape architect, and he thought, and this is directly from his request. He thought that we needed fencing to eliminate public parking that may try to access the intercoastal waterway through the walkway between lots seven and eight. When we eliminated the walkway access with the plat modification, I missed the fact that the split rail fence was still on the plans, and our fencing contractor installed it along with other code-required fencing. In short, the split rail wood fence doesn't really fit the community. Uh, and as there is no longer a public parking issue, if there ever was one, we would like to remove it. As there's no code requirement for fencing there, we'll feel, will look better, more open, and be more of a place, oscillate amenity for dogs and other things. So we went ahead and, and approved that. We did just mention that to Malcolm before doing it, just to make sure that was.
You or, well, you two saw it. Did, did you see the split rail fence? It just didn't.
There were a lot of questions about it.
Yeah, I, I only got back on Tuesday night, and Wednesday morning I had a couple of questions hit me. Nobody will be sad to see it go.
No, sure.
I mean, you saw the fence and then you started looking for the horses.
I was gonna say, all the livestock that's behind the fence, that was the next question.
Mr. Greg thought he was back in Texas.
That's right.
So again, I think everyone was, was happy to, to see that minor modification. We also, so the other application was modified, was Lemon Hill. It was just, um, it was a number of significant, not, a significant number of extremely minor changes. And I'll, I'll read over the list. They are also looking at some landscaping changes on the border, on the, the east, which they're communicating with the neighbor, and we're going to determine whether or not that is going to come before the board. We don't think so, because really, it's just, it's adding a lot, so that, is it significant? Not really, just because the size of the lot. But if they were removing it, I think we would still like to follow our, you know, if they're removing a, a large number of trees, we, we would bring it back. So, to the main house, they changed the west terrace roof to a low-slope, uh, flat membrane roof and breakfast room roof to recess flat with parapet to accommodate some new kitchen windows. So they added those kitchen windows. They extended the living room south wall out an additional nine feet, so again, no real architectural changes, making that larger. Revised parapet composition over the Florida room roof from metal railing to masonry piers and panels, the staff looked at, at that aesthetic change. insignificant, add light gauge metal open air trellis at the south wall of the Florida room, again, that's, it's really very much in the center of, of the entire property, and nothing that would even require a level two, we typically process that as a level one on staff review. Add shutters to doors on second floor south wall, so all minor stuff, the guest house and tackle shed, they modified the new porch to a wood floor decking instead of tile finish, remove windows, the north wall of the office, which actually looked over to the neighboring property, and I think there was an air conditioning unit there too, so they felt like, you know, why are we going to have a window there when there's potentially a lot of noise coming in, their first bedroom number seven and bath number seven and corresponding window location changes, so that was really just, they swapped things over, so it was just, you know, just reflected that change, and they revised the entry door to the tackle shed to add a small fabric awning cover, so this is all stuff that is extremely minor, but that they wanted to make sure that, you know, this is our entire list of everything.
Those come into the remit of level one decisions, which.
Correct, that's.
Individually.
Right.
Okay.
And then with the pool house, they, they removed a window on the east elevation, again, that was looking over to the neighbor's property, and then removed a fireplace from the open air shade pavilion. They increased the total main house square footage by forty-two square feet as a result of changes to living and incremental refinements. They, and then they, they modified the, the dock a little bit, which again, it is all level one, so none of that really amounts to much of anything, but and, and certainly, we don't typically have such a comprehensive list of minor changes, but it is a large property with a lot of things to work with, and they are working with an existing home, right, that they're kind of restoring, so I think that's why the list was, was so long, and again, just, you know, they're, they're kind of working on it.
Thanks for that, Trey, I know the level of details, just to make sure that we're aware of anything that's been done.
Well, I appreciate that they did it too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely, otherwise, we wouldn't have the time we're aiming for, okay, thanks, Trey, any other business? Anything from the board?
No.
In that case, the public, no, they don't, definitely don't want to just make any comments, in that case, thanks, everybody, meeting adjourned.